Order the Town of Garner work session, meeting on May the 28th. We'll start by calling the meeting to order and calling the roll by our deputy clerk, Rebecca Murray, who is freshly educated from a week-long seminar of how to be a clerk. If you would call the roll, please.
Mayor Upton.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance.
Here.
Councilmember Behringer. Councilmember Dallinger.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Councilmember Behringer had requested in advance an excused absence, so I will accept a motion to make that an approved absence.
I move to second it.
Motion by Mr. Singleton, second by Mr. Matthews. All in favor of approving that absence, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. It passes unanimously. We will have a couple of items here. We don't have, of course, on the work session, we don't have the invocation of the pledge of allegiance, but I would like to say two things that are kind of in the vein of patriotism and thoughtfulness. Yesterday, of course, was Memorial Day, had a fantastic event at Lake Minson Park. Our honorary secretary of Veterans Affairs, our councilmember Mitchell Matthews stepped up and had a great program, well-attended despite the bad weather. So, thank you very much for that. A number of people toured the monument after that, quite event. Yesterday, most of you know of a terrible accident on Highway 70. A local couple was killed, their young son still in hospital. He was a player in GBI, Garner baseball, a team member there, Cub Scout, going to United Methodist Church, I think. He's in tough shape in hospital right now. And even as we speak, the Garner baseball crowd is having a vigil in his honor right now. So, in lieu of an invocation, if we would just take a moment of silence, please, to think about not only the ones who gave their life in the wars to keep us free, but also the families that are suffering. Keep in mind, our first responders from Garner, they were, you know, it's always collateral damage when you're a fire, police, EMS, onlooker, as well as the family and the friends. So, let's just take one moment of silence, please, in regards to that. Thank you. And getting on with business, we need to adopt the agenda tonight that we have in front of us, but I think we need to amend it to include one item that did not appear on the original agenda.
Mayor, I move to amend the agenda to include appointment of the town manager during the presentation portion of the meeting.
I second it.
Movement by Mr., the motion by Mr. Vance and the second by Mr. Matthews, all in favor of adding that item to the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay, passes unanimously. And before we get to that motion, I'd just like to give you a little background on it, and then I'll be asking for a motion. But your town council has been working diligently for several months to make sure that Garner has the best possible leadership moving on into the 21st century. And I'm very excited to announce that we have found the perfect candidate and reached an agreement. In a few moments, I'll ask for a motion and the council will take a vote, but first I want to give you just a little background on this situation. They say that a bird in the hand is worth two in the bush. Well, we have a unique situation. We have a double winner in the hand. Not only do we have a proven performer with over a quarter of a century of municipal experience, 24 years in a leadership role, but this is unbelievable part, two of those years were an on-the-job test drive for Jody right here. So, we were glad to have that kind of experience and that kind of insight and confidence as we move forward, and we're very, very proud to be able to promote from within our own team. And let me tell you something else about Jody Miller, too. If there's one word that describes her approach, it's proactive. If you are not serious about having something done, don't mention it to Jody because it will happen. For example, I had mentioned that I'd like to attend a few staff meetings, say hello to the folks, and thanks for what you do, and she asked, is your online calendar up to date? Then she started to fill it up, so that was extremely successful. I recently saw an email from the president of the Garner Area Historic Society suggesting that the town should make sure the historic house on our newly-acquired Jurgen property be secured and stabilized. Two days later, when I drove by, I saw four vehicles from Public Works at the house. Coincidence or proactivity? I don't know. I'm guessing proactivity at work. Some of you know that Town Garner and the Garner Fire and Rescue have been talking for seven years about joining together. Two weeks ago, Jody and I attended a meeting of the fire board and heard them unanimously pass a resolution moving ahead with the final stage of that feasibility study. So, this is happening. You've probably heard this quote from ice hockey legend Wayne Gretzky before. He said, "I skate to where the puck is going to be, not where it has been." I think Wayne borrowed that from Jody. She knows where it's going, and she's ahead of the curve. Jody Miller is the one we want on our team and leading our team. Is there a motion?
I move to appoint Jody M. Miller as the town manager for the Town of Garner effective immediately, and to authorize the mayor to execute an employment agreement with Ms. Miller.
Second it.
There's a motion by Mr. Vance and a second by Mr. Matthews that we point Jody Miller as our town manager effective immediately. Unless there's some discussion, I'll call for a voice vote here. All in favor of that appointment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. This is good news for Garner. This is great news for our town, for our citizens, our staff. We could not be happier. Thank you very much for working with us through this, and thanks for your service as the interim town manager. Now, don't have to remember all those words, just town manager, not dinner town, not this all about me. It's very exciting news, and we'll circle back on that a little bit later as well. We have a couple of presentations. We have discussion and reports on the agenda as well. We have an economic development quarterly update, and this is the first of a quarterly update. And we have our economic development director, Nate Groover, is going to bring us up to date, and we look forward to hearing something like this quarterly, something the council has asked for, and we appreciate you coming and kind of keeping us up with what's going on.
Sir, thank you, Mayor, and council. Appreciate the opportunity to present to you tonight. I know it's a little late, but appreciate your patience in that. And get started. Perfect. So, again, want to be sure to kind of cement home the facts of our department-focused area. So, these are the buckets that we're working in every day as we work to recruit new business and retain business, our marketing efforts for the town, and our focus on entrepreneurship. So, these are our three buckets that we're working on every day, making sure that all those tasks align. So, a little update on our business recruitment project activity here. So, what you're seeing here is our friends at the Economic Development Partnership in North Carolina send out a report every year that goes through and basically provides all the information for the request for information that they receive around sites from business site-selection consultants and actual businesses. So, you can see there, they had 315 new location projects announced in 2023. The staggering figure there, maybe staggering to some, 83% of those were for manufacturing and assembly. So, as economic developer, I like to see that because that bodes well that we're a state that makes things. So, I like to see that stat on there. 4% for warehouse and distribution, and then a little bit surprising, but then kind of also not surprising, given the kind of soft market with life sciences, research and development is down from the previous year. Moving on to the real estate requests, you can see there that about 40% needed building and about 40% requested a site. So, almost evenly split there. And then the other stat that I paid close attention to, and like the mayor said, the old Wayne Gretzky quote of skating to where the puck is, this is the number-one thing I look at when I see these reports, is what was the size requirement of the facilities that they're requesting? So, you can see there that 70% of the building requests needed buildings of over 100,000 square feet, and that's in tune with what we're seeing in the local market here. And then as of the sites that were requested, 41% requested sites over 50 acres. And unfortunately, just right now, we don't have any of those sites, so I'll get on to the next slide here that talks about the sites and buildings that we respond with when we receive these requests. So, we received 47 of these from our friends at Wake County, so it trickles down from Economic Development Partnership in North Carolina, down to Wake County, then down to us. So, we received 47 of them. 22 of them requested available land, and we were only able to submit on seven of these 47. So, I ran that quick math with my calculator, and that was 6.7% of the RFI's that we received, we were able to respond to. And proud to report that we have one current active project that company consultant reached out directly to us and working actively with that company. It is confidential, and actually, the person that I'm working with is a family friend. That's how confidential it is. So, they just kind of let me know a little bit about the company and kind of their requirements, so working with them to hopefully get them to Garner. So, I know you hear me talk a lot about products, so our product update here. Fortunately, the good news is we have new product, so that's always a good thing. Garner Commerce Center 70, 120,000 square feet total over three buildings, and this is great space for manufacturing, assembly use. This was very much needed because now that we're seeing a little bit of kind of the smaller shops looking around, the size on these buildings is kind of in that perfect sweet spot. So, and then the second product here that we're happy that's coming along is the fifth building for Garner Business Park 70. So, 225,000 square feet of available space. They're marketing this for distribution uses. They don't have a tenant yet, and then also the proud fact on this one is that it received the TBJ Space Award last year. So, we were happy to help the team at Almeyer recognize this building. So, and then I know that, you know, in my frequent updates, I'm always talking about product and, you know, where the buildings are, but I thought you might want to know who's in these buildings. So, here's a list of the companies that are in Garner Business Park 70. I know y'all are familiar with MD Logistics that we had the ribbon cutting for wintertime last year. The fun fact about MD Logistics is they're a cold storage company for life sciences, and they took down the entire 225,000 square feet building. So, you don't see that a lot, so we're proud to call them home here in Garner. And then moving right along over to Beacon Commerce Park, so right across the street there from Amazon, I know you've seen these logos, so Alchemy and Unifar, life sciences companies. We're obviously happy to get the word out that UPS located here, and also with Corn Main and Fishman. And rapidly moving along to one of our other tasks here with entrepreneurship. So, we are pleased to announce that for our Launch Garner program this year, we've done a slight adjustment working with the team at Wake Tech and the team that runs the launch program, and we're going to move our next class back to January 2025, really for us to be able to capture a bigger class. And then also, too, Wake Tech has a competition that results in some grant money at the end of April. So, allowing us to push back will allow the Launch Garner students the ability to finish up their class and then immediately roll into the business competition program, which we feel will be beneficial to them. So, we're looking forward to getting that rolling here shortly. And then piggybacking, too, also with our Launch Garner, so you can see here a picture of the fifth gear touchdown space. This is a space that Shayla Douglas basically single-handedly created in the back of 120 East Main. You can see there with the graphics and the furniture, we've basically taken kind of what is an old storage closet and turned this into a touchdown space available to our launch graduates and also our launch partners. So, just a third space for them to be able to kind of touchdown, and we'll be happy to unveil this here when we get some of our equipment installed, and we'll be doing an open house to kind of help market the availability of this asset. And of course, would be remiss not to talk about our Launch Garner partners, obviously the participation with our Rotary Clubs, Choose Smokel and Small Y'all, and then GEDC, and then of course, our friends at Wake Tech, DGA and The Chamber, and obviously wouldn't be possible without the town support. So, definitely want to be sure to thank everyone there. And then moving right along to our partner updates. So, again, Mayor, I know this is our first update to you, so appreciate that opportunity again, and there's a lot of cliches in economic development. The most well-known one is it's truly a team sport. We can't do this in a silo. So, obviously, our most crucial partners with economic development, obviously GEDC, DGA, and our friends over at The Chamber who we're working with every day, and I think Mr. Vance can testify that we're using a lot of his time with GEDC here lately, but I believe it's time well spent. And then I know that you did receive an update and got to meet the board members last month, but also wanted to be sure, again, just to highlight and call out, you know, Jeff Swain, Mr. Vance, Megan Pamero, Bill Moyer, Buck Kennedy, and Kevin Payne. Kevin is our newest board member. I appreciate all their good work and time, and then also want to thank Doris Hubner and Griffin Lockridge for their years of service to GEDC. And again, I know you received this update a month ago, but I want to provide you kind of just current progress, that we're still working with our partners at Inspire on the Northeast Gateway Study. I had a meeting today, and we're going to continue that work as we work with all the stakeholders in the study area and our consultant partners at Inspire. We do have a meeting set up at the end of June, another stakeholder meeting. It will be the last stakeholder meeting where Inspire will present their findings and recommendation to everyone, and we're happy to kind of conclude all that work together. And then, of course, want to highlight the good work that DGA is doing, so it's definitely event season here. So, we have our Got To Be Garner markets, which is kind of a new branding opportunity for DGA, and then, of course, our markets on Main. So, we have eight events from now until December, so we'll be sure to post those event dates and everything, and remind everyone to come out and see us. Mayor, I hope you appreciate this one. We took this picture from the youth leadership Garner event we held right here with the mock town council. So, that was a fun day to get the high school students involved in kind of what goes into, you know, local town government and everything that goes into preparing a budget. So, we had that event here. The students elected their own mayor and representatives, and I believe had a good time and an educational event that day. And then we also had our Reality of Money event, which is one of my favorite events where, you know, we go to the schools and the kids are given basically a career with a budget, and they have to go around to different stations and put together their household budget. I wish that was something I had when I was in high school. I didn't have that opportunity, so, but it's very inspiring to see these young kids kind of go without some things. You would think they'd want to be more focused on entertainment, but they're more focused on making sure how their spouse gets to work and daycare for their kids. So, that's inspiring and always good to see. And of course, we partner every year with The Chamber on Small Business Week, so that was earlier last month, the beginning of this month. So, great event with Matthew and his team, provided a couple seminars and headshots in a good way just to highlight small business in Garner and help continue to promote those businesses. And then a little bit here, just internally here, getting into the weeds with our update. So, as we looked at our strategic plan and what we're spending our time on, we really kind of wanted to create a new framework. So, thanks to Mari Howe and her talents, she developed this. So, you'll see here the buckets at the beginning are still on here, but with a new one. So, of course, we have our business recruitment and retention. We're going to continue to do that, support for our entrepreneurs and small business, and then obviously, our marketing of Garner. But the newest one that we've added, just because we've seen how much of our time is spent on this topic with site and product development. So, obviously, the work that we're doing with GEDC and the small-area study, and then all the meetings that all of you have been in, just talking about local real estate development, we figured that was appropriate, that we add this to our framework. So, as moving forward, these are the four buckets that we'll continue to work in. And then before I finish, I do want to take a point of personal privilege, just for a humble brag, to let you know that I have achieved the certification for North Carolina Certified Economic Developer. Shayla and I are both in these classes together. Shayla, I believe, has one or two classes left, one class left. So, what that means is it's about 100 hours of coursework through the North Carolina Economic Development Academy at East Carolina. So, about seven classes, like I said, about 100 hours, and then it ends with a capstone. My capstone ended up being 15 pages. If you ask my family how much I enjoyed it, they can let you know because they saw me over the weekends working on this paper. In fact, my daughter just calls it the paper, and every now and then when she sees me doing emails, she's like, oh, are you doing the paper? I'm like, no, no, that paper's done. So, but was pleased that, you know, the good work of that paper resulted in the North Carolina Economic Development Association letting me know last week that we'll be recognized at the annual conference in June while we receive our official certification. So, just wanted to let you know that because that was one of our smart objectives for the department, that the department, both of us receive certification. So, Shayla will finish that up next year. So, in a year, you'll have both members of the Economic Development Department state-certified, and right now, I think that puts us in an elite class of around 30 or so in the entire state that have gone through the program and completed. So, I appreciate the opportunity, just do a little humble brag there and kind of just share the work that we're working on to really kind of help bolster the department. And that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, well, first of all, congratulations and thanks to both of you for getting that certification. Just when you think you know it all, you go to something like that and you learn a whole lot more.
Definitely.
Yeah, so thanks for going the extra mile on that, both of you. Time well spent. That being said, what questions or comments do we have from the council members?
Mr. Mayor, I got a question here that's on page four of my book, and you made mention of requesting 50 acres or more in our area. Is there a shortage, or are we proceeding? How do we determine that? Do we work with our commercial real estate people, determine what land is available? Is there a shortage of 50-acre slots in our greater Garner area?
Oh, yeah, so a good question, Mr. Matthews, and I appreciate that. So, there's not a shortage of land, there's a shortage of available land that's ready to market for economic development purposes. So, basically, what that means is just local landowners that have worked with a broker that say, hey, I'm ready to, you know, dispose of this asset here, let's get it sold and turned over to a new use. So, yeah, so what that just means is just not any available land for us to market for economic development purposes. And the real estate brokers are, you know, working very hard to get, you know, they know that the available land's out there, and they're trying to get it under contract to be able to market it for a separate, for a different use.
And just from my information, do you guys work hand-in-hand on these type projects? And the reason I ask that, being a former county commissioner at county level, I know at the time how we did this at county level and working with local communities and how a lot of networking was going on. I'm just kind of curious, if that was a big thing at county level, is a reason why it can't be at town level where you'd have quarterly meetings, or have many kind of meetings with the local real estate companies, like where are we at, here's what we're looking, do we have that working in the pot, I guess is the question? If not, why not?
Yes, sir, no, we do. So, nothing formally where it's, you know, like scheduled events or networking events like that. I do try to make sure that I'm as plugged into the local real estate community as possible and keeping up individual relationships with the different brokerage shops around to make sure that, you know, they know what we have. And I've, I can think of two off the top of my head of folks that I've been working with that, you know, definitely want to get involved and active and help, you know, create jobs in Garner, and they have the same property information that I have. So, we've kind of sat down and kind of shared different areas, of course, shared the comp plan with them so they know where our kind of focus areas are. But yeah, so, yeah, so definitely, it's part of my day-to-day role, working with the local real estate community to keep, make sure that they're informed and educated.
And my other question, Mr. Mayor, on the business recruitment, and I like numbers when we get into stuff, so 47 RFI's received, 22 of these requestable available land, and seven submitted, one active. Is, I guess, when you see 47, you know, and how do we follow up to make sure we're getting our name in front of all these 47 RFI's, these people to potentially look at us on the commercial side?
Right, so that's our day-to-day relationship with our partners at Wake County and the state. So, I make sure, I talk to our friends at Wake County, of course, weekly, and then, of course, schedule regular meetings with our friends at the state to make sure that they know our available product. Both the business recruitment team, but then also the business development team, which I, you know, know firsthand from working at the state, the business development team that's working on foreign direct investment are always good people to get in front of because they're overseas trying to sell North Carolina, and selfishly, I want them to help promote Garner. So, I make sure that our business development friends over at EDPNC know about our available product. So, and a little bit about those numbers, so the seven that we are able to submit on, those were just seven existing buildings that met the site requirements from those requests, and primarily, the product that you've seen tonight, basically between over Greenfield and Beacon, that's the bulk of the available product that I'm responding when I get with one of these requests.
at the time how we did this at the county level and working with local communities and how a lot of networking was going on. I'm just kind of curious, if that was a big thing at county level is the reason why it can't be at town level where you'd have quarterly meetings or have many kind of meetings with the local real estate companies, like where are we at? Here's what we're looking. Do we have that working in the pot, I guess is the question? If not, why not?
Yes, sir. No, we do. So nothing formally where it's, you know, like scheduled events or networking events like that. I do try to make sure that I'm as plugged into the local real estate community as possible and keeping up individual relationships with the different brokerage shops around to make sure that, you know, they know what we have. And I've, I can think of two off the top of my head of folks that I've been working with that, you know, definitely want to get involved and active and help, you know, create jobs in Garner. And they have the same property information that I have. So we've kind of sat down and kind of shared different areas, of course, shared the comp plan with them so they know where our kind of focus areas are. But yeah, so yeah, so definitely as part of my day to day role, working with the local real estate community to keep, make sure that they're informed and educated.
And my other question, Mr. Mayor, on the business recruitment, and I like numbers when we get into stuff. So 47 RFIs received, 22 of these requestable available land and seven submitted, one active. Is, I guess, when you see 47, you know, and how do we follow up to make sure we're getting our name in front of all these 47 RFIs, these people to potentially look at us on the commercial side?
Right. So that's our day to day relationship with our partners at Wake County and the state. So I make sure, I talk to our friends at Wake County, of course, weekly, and then, of course, schedule regular meetings with our friends at the state to make sure that they know our available products. Both the business recruitment team, but then also the business development team, which I, you know, know firsthand from working at the state, the business development team that's working on foreign direct investment are always good people to get in front of because they're overseas trying to sell North Carolina. And selfishly, I want them to help promote Garner. So I make sure that our business development friends over at EDPNC know about our available product. So and a little bit about those numbers. So the seven that we are able to submit on, those were just seven existing buildings that met the site requirements from those requests. And primarily, the product that you've seen tonight, basically between over at Greenfield and Beacon, that's the bulk of the available product that I'm responding when I get with one of these requests.
Because I know at the county level, everybody, every municipality is, when they, they used to have meetings where they invited everybody in from the different.
Yeah, we do. In fact, we have one next week.
And talk about these things because it's just a big lobbying effort because I've sat in on some of those back in the past. And every town is fighting for every piece of that they can get. And sometimes the hunger are, the more they'll sit up and listen to you. But if we, if we need to work with our county commissioners, if it's something we can do to support our economic from our end of it, that's something we can do because, you know, we've, we can, we've got people we can speak to to.
Absolutely.
Give us a, give a seat at the table, shall we say?
Right.
So I'm very big in economic development on jobs and revenue and with the growth we're going. But we had this conversation last week, I believe it was, on budget items. So commercial business is truly very, very much important. So.
And to that point, like I said, we have a meeting, we have, we meet quarterly with our partners at Wake County. But I mean, John Hodges and I were just in a meeting eight days ago with Michael Haley and Sam Ralph on the Wake County Economic Development Team. So and talking about just kind of new initiatives and opportunities to continue to work with them.
Stay on.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Questions, comments from council members?
Thank you for the report and update.
Thanks for the information and congratulations on your status. I thought there was a lot of value at our joint meeting with GEDC. We went over the local area plan. You know, the board members that were there seemed very engaged and thoughtful and there was a sort of very strong fiduciary spirit I felt from them for Garner. So I think there's value in doing that again in the short term, whether it's one of their meetings and we come and the attorney will tell us what we have to publish and all that. But I think it's, it's good to get everybody on the same page. There's a lot of different expertise and interests and perspectives. So I think in the short term, that would be really helpful because we're a very dynamic region and environment, you know, economic development area and growth trajectory as a town. And so getting everybody on that same page with your new board members, I think would be really, really helpful. The other question I had was on the small area study, could have two questions in one. I know we had a couple of other small area studies that we had penciled out, but we dove in on one. What's sort of the status and time horizon of the other two and sort of what have been sort of lessons learned on the first one that will help those if those come forward?
Right. Yeah, so yeah, so great question. So the short answer is right now, we don't have a timeline for the second or third one. And that's mainly just as we've kind of done a deep dive on this one, I don't think any of us are surprised at the amount of work or findings that have come out of it. So we're, I guess, the short answer is we're focused on this one right now. And then when we conclude this one, we're obviously going to be look for, be looking for, you know, potential areas to maybe do a second or third one or maybe some other initiatives that, you know, that we could be working on that, of course, GEDC can have their hand in and, you know, provide their input. So I think the, again, the short answer on that one is just stay tuned. Also too, as we talk about our GEDC board and members coming on and potentially, you know, members rolling off, want to be mindful of, you know, their volunteer hours that they're spending, so.
Yeah, and just as soon as you sort of get that timeline, you know, make sure, again, kind of that two way street of information so we can budget for it because they're not free. Last question I had, as a point, as a mention of like community promotion and marketing and kind of how quality of life is a tremendous sort of selling point. And there are two kind of things we've done there for me. One is sort of workforce housing and making sure, I know Mr. Vance is very in tuned on that and Mr. Swain as well. So making sure GEDC is a partner in that. I think there's a role to be played there as a separate entity to be helpful. The other one is also this sort of, they talk about the, Mr. Singleton, I kind of scoff at missing middle when it comes to housing, but there seems to be a very big missing middle when it comes to consumer retail. And that kind of goes hand in hand with rezonings. It goes in hand in hand with, you know, that, which is kind of on our side, but then the recruitment of kind of mixed use or whatever types of projects like that. But it goes hand in hand with small business development and having the locations for small businesses to even be. So I think even as part of the conversation we'd have with the GEDC board is sort of setting some retail goals over time and kind of putting that on your radar. Again, I think the more cross talk work we have, the better. So that's kind of, we do such a great job on the warehouse side that there's just this, you know, people having to go to other municipalities to dine or open a small business and stuff. And so I think it's, there's some, a missing middle. And I hate to use that term, but that's really what it looks like when you talk to residents. They were trying to, you know, shop and eat and that kind of stuff. So, so yeah, that's all feedback I got. We're going, we're going in the right direction. Go faster.
Let us say thank you, Nate, for the, for the information and the update that will be given to the council quarterly on a regular basis to keep everyone informed and to let the council know that the, that economic development is a hard at work. I can say from my point of my perspective, Mr. Dillinger and also Mr. Matthews, my, the lessons I learned from the area study and along with what's going on now is that we continue to do what we are doing, and that is developing those relationships with our development community and our business community. That is happening and that is an art within itself. They are doing some of the same things that we are doing. In fact, for the area study of 50 and 50 and I-540, we were already on the job with a previous developer to try to pull, pull that product together. Then it didn't come to fruition, but now it is moving forward with, with a property owner who has consolidated the property to move forward in the economic development arena. And that development relationship, I believe, is important. It's, the networking and all of the coordination that's happening now has, I believe, for myself, has helped me understand the Northeast Gateway Study as well because we have some of the same issues there, as you mentioned, just trying to consolidate properties to get a product that's going to be economically feasible for us to get involved with. And we're currently working with a property owner there and developers there to try to see what, how can we work together to make this a win-win proposition? It's something that is ongoing, it's constantly changing and, and the, and the type of strategies that we're using are one that are very dynamic and, and the team is well aware of that. I believe that we have a strong team. We have a strong direction and it's a process that is a back and forth process, an iterative process, and one that is, as you would say, market driven as well. So with all of those in play, it's not an easy, it's not an easy thing to say, to try to pull together, but it is a work in progress. And I would say thank you to Nate and John for their hard work and from the staff point, pulling everyone together to including the planning director who is now on board with us to let us know the projects that are coming in proximity to projects that we're doing so that we will know how those projects may impact what we are doing as well. So it's a, it's a lot going on, a lot going on. And thank you to the team. That's all I got.
A lot of good comments, part of a good conversation. Any other observations or questions? Any other observations from you, Nate?
No, I just appreciate your time and again, appreciate your patience. I know this was a month delayed, but couldn't anticipate the home emergencies I was going to have that day. So again, appreciate your time and patience.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Look forward to the next quarterly report, which won't be very long off.
That's right.
All right, well, good luck with your plumbing issues at home. That was important. And that being said, we'll move to our next discussion report. It has to do with points of access to development projects. And John Hodges, I think, will want to give us the overall introduction to who will be speaking and what it's about.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. A couple of months ago, Mr. Singleton had asked the manager to look at, have time for some discussion around access points to subdivisions and other development. And so we talked as a staff and wanted to bring some background information about how the regulatory things that control the, that. Hopefully, that, that what we've prepared tonight will be a good starting point for the discussion that Mr. Singleton wanted to have and that the other members of council will want to have. So our development services team, Mr. Trezenberg, Mr. Paget and Ms. Harrison have all prepared this presentation together. Ms. Harrison is having to join us tonight remotely. So she is on, listening in, and we'll be calling on her if a question comes up specifically that she can answer. But Jeff and Paul are going to each present sort of the, the rules and regulations around the, the regulatory documents that each of them are the primary responsible staff party for, and then we'll open up to discussion. And hopefully, this information will set the right stage for the discussion that Mr. Singleton wanted to bring forward tonight.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor, council members. As Mr. Hodges noted, we wanted to just give you a brief kind of overview of where we stand with access and the requirements associated with it. So I'll cover what's in the UDO and for Leah, what's in the engineering manual. And then Paul will bring it kind of full circle and talk about how the emergency access portions of it work with and in some cases may take the lead actually on what, what can and can't be provided. So again, the, we have a number of different codes and ordinances that all kind of feed into, as well as agencies into this point of access discussion. So we certainly have our UDO. The UDO incorporates the engineering manual by reference. It addresses both emergency access as well as just general service access. So whether it's people just going from place to place, delivery services, anything that's not a non-emergency but relies on the street network to, to carry out their, their job. And section 8.32 through 8.34 really cover those access standards, including the layout and overall coordination of streets in the town. Then we have the state fire code, which the town goes by. And again, that addresses emergency access specifically. And most of that is all captured in chapter five of that code. And the intent there is to provide sufficient access to buildings, enabling those first responders to conduct efficient fire suppression and rescue operations. Then, of course, we also have DOT for any state maintained roadway. They're going to be maintaining access standards, which are largely targeted towards limiting the number of points of access to reduce the number of conflict points and just overall management of congestion in those corridors. So all those three things kind of play together. So turning to the UDO, what is access? The UDO defines it generally to vehicular entrances to a property, parcel, tract or lot. It must provide a reasonable means of ingress and egress for emergency vehicles and anyone likely to need access to the property for its intended use. So that, as I mentioned before, that includes folks like postal, delivery drivers, visitors, enforcement officials, property owners themselves, other residents in the neighborhood and folks like contractors and maintenance crews who are coming to do work for you on your property, as well as public, public facilities. It must meet fire code access standards. So this again kind of reinforces that the emergency access is also kind of covered in the town's regulations, but more specifically though by the fire code. So what are the limitations to access? These are rules that can be altered by the engineer, as stated in, in the UDO, or an NC DOT traffic engineer's professional determination. So that first set of rules has to do with the distances between intersections. So one of those distance requirements along major thoroughfares is you have to have a minimum of 800 feet between that street intersection. So here we have Joan Sausage and 70. So from that major intersection, you have to have at least 800 feet before your first driveway. And then moving beyond that, you have to have a minimum of 400 feet between driveway points. Again, DOT or the town engineer can make allowances for smaller distances if, in their professional opinion, there's not a detriment to traffic or safety. Then within the engineering manual, Leah can answer some questions if you have them about this. Again, these can be altered, but there is some general street access spacing. So you'll see here in the different road types, what those distance minimum spacing intersections are required, and those are measured from center line to center line. So every lot does require one point of access. So when folks are doing subdivision, it's really a function of the subdivision regulation side of the UDO, not so much the zoning side. So every time someone is doing subdividing work and further, further subdividing property, it is required that every lot has at least one point of access. So we won't let them create a lot unless they do have that access. And then the UDO, when we rewrote it, we decided to get a little more specific about the number of lots and what number of access points are expected based on those, those numbers of subdivided lots. So we have from 76 up to 199, has that two points required. And then as you go up there in increments of 200, first it can be two access points in a stub, and then it can be two points of access in two stubs. But as you keep going up, however many subdivided lots you have in a given area, the number of stubs can never exceed the number of actual functioning, functioning unit, functioning connections. There are allowable modifications, much like there, I think, most of all, we're pretty familiar with topographical or environmental limitations and the way a parcel is laid out. So the UDO does allow for a couple of those modifications and Paul will talk about this first one, well, both of these more. An access point may be gated, but it must be on a private street or private drive. So it can't be a public street and it has to be approved by the fire official. And then temporary modifications, and temporary being that if there's adjacent property that may develop or redevelop, that's the sense of the word temporary. It's not permanently designed or expected to always be that way. I know temporary may bring to mind a much shorter period of time, but for purposes of how this is written, it's until the adjacent property were to develop. And so those temporary modifications, you can be made in cases of having those environmental limitations that preclude you from, from doing a connection that's not super expensive or in cases where the property does have limited frontage. That's where we have those odd shaped pieces that have very limited frontage on public streets. Again, though, they have to have no substantial impact to the emergency service delivery as determined by the fire official. So again, that is something that falls into the fire marshal's court to be able to make those exceptions and to decide when those can be temporarily modified. But the UDO does require that when that adjacent property does develop, then that temporary issue via that stub shall be rectified when it can. So with that background on the UDO, then I want to turn it over to Paul to talk about how the fire code plays in and the types of things that we've made modifications for in the past.
Can I ask a question? Go ahead. The stub word, which chronically just always pops up, nobody wants them. Let's face it, if we build here and this development's done, they don't want an adjoining development where the traffic's flowing to and fro. And I understand the conversation, how we have that. But talk about stubs. Do we have to have stubs? I mean, is it a legal requirement? I'm fair game here, just, but it always comes up, not in a friendly way, every time something's developed is stubs. I know in my neighborhood, I don't particularly want to stub out to somewhere else because it's more traffic going down my street. So, so what's the up and down on stubs? Do we have to have them or what's the deal?
Depends on how far you want me to take it back. Honestly, the whole stubbing and connectivity, there's two things. One, legally, in some cases, you can. One, legally, in some cases, you can't have or leave other subsequent parcels landlocked. So you have to then provide a stub because you're legally required to if they have no other point of access. And then honestly, a lot of, a lot of connectivity requirements have come about due to studies over the years and the amount of, the amount of time lost, the amount of air pollution, various things. It all goes back to the convenience of moving through your community. How far do you have to go to get from point A to point B? And if you have point A and point B as the crow flies, it may only be a few hundred feet. But if you have to go a mile around the block just to get there, there's, there's value judgments you have to trade off for that. Some of that is, you know, miles commuted, the car, everything that's associated with that in terms of, you know, the environmental impacts, the time, if it's somebody who's employed and the amount of time it's taking from, for them to get from one place to the other. So it's all of, you know, it's all of that, just as well as general convenience. But again, not pointing to trying to make something a cut through is where our ordinance tries to focus. And it has to be, again, a value judgment on your part as to what, what is acceptable traffic in a neighborhood? You know, is a thousand cars going down a street during a day, is that objectionable? You know, I think in the professional world, you'll hear people say that, no, that shouldn't be. But to a community, it may be different. So that all comes down to, again, what, what things you value, what's important to you, and realizing that it does have an impact on the larger transportation system's ability to accommodate more traffic and distribute it efficiently. Because if you keep the same number of major intersections from 50 years ago to 100 years from now, you're trying to just put all that traffic through the same number of very defined intersections, and that process, that system's going to break down. It probably already has broken down, and it's never going to get any better. So those are just some of the larger things that kind of play into that discussion. But there are some very practical legal things, and then there's just some value things.
So you answered that quite articulately. I appreciate that. But getting back to it, what's required that we have to deal with? Somebody says, I don't want that stub. You got to hear, we don't, and the, the, well, we didn't want it, that people next door didn't want it, but we're being forced to put it in. So we've heard that before. Does that go away here, or where are we at with this? We need to know.
Right. So what we have currently is what's in our UDO. But then again, it's not just the UDO, it's also the fire code. And so that's the part that you need to hear about yet, because there are some rulings at the state level that impact how far we can go with not having connections.
Got you. Okay. Understand. Okay. Thank you, sir, for that answer.
Yeah, just a question on the temporary modifications, make sure I understand what it means in its totality. I, I get that it means that there can be current temporary modifications to a plan that comes in. Does it, a temporary modification also mean sort of legacy inconsistencies? So is it sort of a, I always pick on Cloverdale or, or Greenbrier, are those considered sort of temporary modifications in the sense that they got a stub road that eventually has to connect, and that makes it a temporary modification to, that it's kind of grandfathered in, but not, like, you, you understand my question, right?
Yeah. So it really depends on what's coming in adjacent and what that adjacent piece requires. So then again, to the degree that an existing subdivision that was probably predated any of this stuff, whether or not those stubs have to be completed at that point is really dependent on what's going on next to it with the additional subdivision activity.
The kind of perfect example would be the Green, that Greenbrier, Grovemont Timber Town Home project. So that stub that was in the Greenbrier was considered sort of a temporary modification? It's, it's kind of weird, because it sounds like an active.
Right.
An active thing. So I guess my question is kind of not quite as on the point as Mr. Matthews, but, you know, you have these older neighborhoods that were intended to be connected by virtue of the existence of this stub. However, our sort of perception and emphasis on safety and mobility vis a vis sidewalks, road widths, has changed. And so what may have been intended to be a future connection to a liked neighborhood with 1950's standards of safety now becomes sort of not safe. And I think that's sort of what we kind of hit on at different points. And I think as a, as a matter of policy, there are a finite number of those connections in the town. And we should be able to identify where they are and where they're adjacent to potential future growth, and, and look at those and say, you know what? If development goes in here, man, that, that would really screw up that neighborhood, because now, I mean, I, I look at a lot of neighborhoods, Forest Hills, Cloverdale, and, you know, I, I remember a quote from someone who said, roads aren't for walking.
I've heard that.
But when you want to help the neighborhood, and I mentioned the pedestrian plan, you have these informal walking networks, and there are people, I mean, Forest Hills for decades, it's like, you didn't need to worry about people walking, there were no kids in the neighborhood, they weren't, now you got kids and dogs and walking in the street. And my, always my biggest concern is encouraging more traffic to go down those roads, because now people are used to walking on them, and they don't have sidewalks, and never will. And so I think that's sort of the policy question. I think any new development, you expect, you're going to do a stub, there's 50 acres next to you, or 30 acres, probably going to get developed, that, that's kind of, it's going to happen, right? I, I think the biggest concern is a lot of just older neighborhoods and pushing that past that, cut through traffic through. And again, there's, there's a quality of life to some of those neighborhoods, and it's not just sort of a selfishness, it's also really safety, because the people who cut through don't, they, they cut through, they go faster than someone who lives in that neighborhood, more than likely. I know, I, I mean, I don't speed anywhere, of course, but you're always more careful in your, you know, your own neighborhood. I mean, I live on Buffalo, Buffalo Road, for example, you know, people fly down that road. It's like, I live on that road, I want to slow people down, because it's dangerous and people come out. But there are plenty of people who are just passing through Buffalo Road, and they just 50, 60 miles an hour. So I think that, to Mr. Matthews' point, there's, there's a policy exception space for some of what we do and want to communicate and emphasize, kind of what we've kind of picked up on, engineering's picked up on, is sort of the safety is like the number one element in sort of the decision making process. So I'm just trying to connect some dots and throw some new dots out there.
Yeah. So I mean, that's a very, that's a very good observation. You know, again, it, like I say, it really depends on what's going, what the proposal is next to it. If we didn't have, you know, a certain number of units in that adjacent development, then maybe that, the, the ordinance requirement for that may or may not be in place. I think we have, hopefully, you know, maybe kind of stumbled on a, on some solutions that do fit both what the fire code has and doesn't, you know, stray too far from what the UDO requires. So yeah, no, I definitely hear you on that, and we'll.
I looked at some of the plans on the neighborhood meetings, and I see more and more of those sort of hammerhead turnarounds in, in neighborhoods and some of these proposals coming in. So it's kind of seeing some of those changes happen is, is interesting. I don't know if that's what they're called. Is that what they're called?
Yeah. Hammerhead.
I wasn't sure if I had gotten the right term or not.
Questions, comments?
Questions.
Back to you, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So the fire code covers access to commercial and residential developments. It's actually, when you look at a residential, especially one and two family, there's only three things out of the fire code that apply. It's water supply, access, and addressing. Knowing where to go, how to get there, and making sure we give them the water. So section 503 of the fire code addresses the minimum requirements for these roads. It requires a minimum of one, and that access road has to get us within 150 feet of all portions of that building. There's an exception in there, that if the building is sprinkled, it can get us within 200 feet. And what that is, is so that we can get a hose pull off the truck. The old days, back probably before the fire code was even written, a pre-connect was 150 feet, to making sure we could get to every portion. Most of our trucks now, we're carrying 200 feet. I know before I got off the truck, we had a 300-foot lay that came off the back, and we could gate it down and add a 200 foot, so we could get these long distances. But the idea is that we're getting them with 150 feet. In 503, it gives us the additional, or the ability as a fire code official to say, hey, we need an additional access to this project, whether it's residential or commercial, because either the size, the depth, topography reasons, or, or any of those items. So the verbiage is, is right up there for it. It says that we can authorize it based on the potential for impairment, vehicle congestion, terrain conditions, climate conditions, or any other factor that could limit access. Please remember the fire code, the purpose of that is to get the folks there for an emergency. And it's the fire code, but it really is a life safety code. It's fire, PD, EMS, anybody else to come help our residents whenever they need help and our commercial properties. The design of that fire apparatus access road has to be a minimum of 20 feet unobstructed width. The purpose of that is so that two fire trucks or two emergency vehicles could pass each other during an operation, because there's areas where we don't have hydrants, we may need to do a shuttle run. Okay? So you've got to run a tanker in, drop some water off, that tanker leaves to fill back up, another tanker's coming in. That's the purpose of that 20-foot width. The 13-6 high is just to accommodate the varying heights of trucks. Ladder trucks are taller than our engines, so it gives us where our ladders aren't getting beat up as we get vehicles into these sites. It has to be an all-weather surface. It can be down with concrete, asphalt, grass pavers. The idea is that over time and weather's not tearing that road up, we shouldn't be driving over divots and ruts and things like that to get to them. And then the ability to support the weight of our vehicles, our heaviest vehicle is 78,000 pounds, so we look at 80,000 pounds for those accesses. The fire code also has supplemental material in there. So 503 is the minimum requirements. When we look at specifics, so the appendices are kind of funny in the fire code, to enforce them all, we have to adopt them. We use the appendices as guidance as we make decisions. So it used to, it, the appendix D used to read that at 30 homes in a residential site is when we ask for a second fire apparatus access. The next slide, you'll see the general assembly change that two years ago to 100 homes. It also talks about commercial properties, so at a specific threshold there, we're asking for a second. So that's kind of how we use it whenever we're looking, and we look at each project separately, because it, you can't apply it really holistically. And when I do it, I try to use the code, but also the operational experience I have from riding the truck. Like, how hard is it to get into a site like this during an emergency? Within the appendix D, so these are some of the specifics we look at. 104 addresses commercial and industrial developments, and it talks, we're looking at buildings that are three stories or 30 feet in height, if they're exceeding 62,000 square feet, if they're non-sprinkled, and up to 124,000 squared, if they, square feet if they are sprinkled. There, we're asking for the two separate and approved fire apparatus access roads. We've had a couple of projects, that Garner Building 5 being one of them, we couldn't get 150 feet all the way around the building because of the topography out there. They had to build a retaining wall. So what we did is we stopped the fire apparatus access road short at the end of the building, and we had them put a wall hydrant, which is supplied by the fire pump, so that the firefighters could tie in, still have the same support as if they were tied to the fire truck before they ever made entry into that building off of that, or that be the western side, I think, of that building. So a, as we build out, there's going to be challenges to where we can't meet the code all the time, but we're, still, my job is to make sure that the firefighters have the tools to do their job when they need it. So that, that was a, a way that we met that one. Multi-family residential dwellings, so our apartment buildings, projects more than 100 dwelling units non-sprinkled, or 200 if they are sprinkled, should be equipped with two separate. And then our one and two family dwellings, like I said, it used to be 30, and then NC State Law 2021-121 changed that requirement to 100 homes, and that was effective January 1, 2022. In the 2024 code, they're actually bringing that language forward, and they're bringing a lot of language out of D and, or appendix D and appendix B into chapter five, just to make it consistent across the state. But that code has not been completely approved by the building code council yet, so.
A question.
Yes, sir.
And it's, it's for you and probably the attorney. And, you know, the, if you're doing a commercial development, you've got to do sprinklers, and like if you're doing residential, commercial, rental, whatever, where do, if I come in and want to do a single-family home development, that it's all going to be rentals, do I have to develop that as commercial? Or do I, or can I say, I'm just doing this as residential, even though it's commercial because they're all rentals? Or is there some weird gray area in there?
So I thi, I think there might be a little bit of confusion, as the building code for multifamily treats it as like it's commercial. But if you're building single-family housing, it doesn't matter if it's rental or owner occupied.
What about townhomes? Because I know townhomes sort of fall into that single-family category in a weird way sometimes, too.
So they've, they've made changes within the code, and that's at the, the building code council level that turns, that would be considered an R3. So what they've done is they've taken that sprinkler requirement out and made them put a two-hour firewall in between each unit. Yep. So, and, and they had a, shortly after the 2018 came into effect, they had a subdivision, kind of like you were explaining there, everything was rental in Wilmington, and they initially sprinkled everything there with a 13D system. And then shortly after that, is when we started seeing some of the code changes come into effect.
So like this one, this D1-06 and 07, you got one and two family residential developments. But again, we're sort of seeing like sometimes townhomes can straddle, like, single-family attached or whatever it's called. And so what sort of prevails there if you're, and it, because it sounds like it's a, not a single building on this multifamily, it's a dwelling unit, is that in a parcel or is that connected? I mean, it can't be 100.
So by the definition, a multifamily residential is, is a apartment, when you go back to the building code.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
So that is, there's different building code versus like zoning definitions.
They don't match up.
Residents, you know, and, and now the state has changed one and two family, that it's now going to be one, two, and three and four family will count as residential under a residential building code. So you could have a townhouse that's a four family that is going to be built under sort of the single-family code, and one that's five or more will be under the commercial code.
Okay.
And then the other thing is, under 160D, they said, we can't make definitions of dwelling units and residences and things that are different than the state definition, but the state has multiple definitions. They still haven't clarified that issue. Perhaps with the new residential code being adopted, that we'll get more clarity on those kinds of definitions.
I'm rightfully confused, is what you're telling me.
Yes.
Okay. Great.
Thanks, thanks to the general assembly and some court interpretations as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. We went from one building code council that looked at all of these five trades to now they're splitting it, and you're going to have a residential code council that's going to look at the residential code, which is going to cover up to four dwelling units. And then you'll have the building code council that'll. and then you'll have the building code council that'll carry the other four trades. Four, yeah. Still be five trades, but one less book. So what we did is, I just took a, kind of some examples of some fire accesses that we currently have. Most of these are gated, so Jeff had touched on, the fire code does allow for gates on these fire access roads, the secondary ones, but they do have to be approved by us. What we, what we're asking for is that they have Knox Box, either padlocks, or if they're automatic gates, we have a key switch. In the old day, it was a siren override, but we found that that's not really consistent. There were many days that I had to get out in the rain and push a gate open because the siren wouldn't override the, the system. So we've went to a, a key switch for it, so the fellas can just open it that way. Currently, we've got one at the old Evolve Apartments, which is now Timberline, at Timber Creek, the one off of Benson Road. It is there, and at Brook Rock Lane. Some challenges that, that we're coming up with is we have to make sure that our fire inspectors, when they do their annual inspections, are reminding the property owners that, hey, this is, this is our access, and you need to keep trees cut down, you need to keep signage up, those type of things. So that's where, the top right picture is that. This is the second, the lower one is the second fire access to Adeline Apartments, and it is there off of Health Park. We've got the one over at Lennox Place Apartments. We've got the Salt Hill at Adeline Way, and then that big picture just kind of shows those two fire acts, second fire accesses that we have. So we have all that residential multifamily off of Timber Drive East, and until we get, got that Salt Hill cut through in there, Timber Drive East was the only way back into all those folks. So we, we can recap real quick. So points of access to the projects are guided by the UDO, the fire code, and NCOD standard, or, yeah, NCDOT standards. UDO addresses emergency and general service access. The fire code is meant to give our emergency responders access to the site. The minimum requirements again are twenty feet wide, thirteen-six clear height for our fire, all-weather, and capable of supporting our heaviest vehicle. And then the DOT standards are there to support and to help limit conflicts. Questions? And I'll tell you from an operational standpoint, so I rode the truck for fifteen years. When I first started riding, you went to a call, and you went back to the station. You caught your next call from the station. It's not that way anymore. You catch your next call from the last call you were on. And so, the connectivity helps from that standpoint. We actually, once I got promoted to captain, my driver didn't like me very much, because we would go out, I'd give him an address, they'd drive to it, and then I'd give him the next address. That would be their map test. Almost anyone could drive me to a site from the station, but to really understand, could they, because it, you're talking about seconds that matter, is could I leave from anywhere, you know, if you picked an address here in Garner, what's the quickest way to get to the next one? Do I have to go back out to the main road, or is there that connectivity that I can use to get me closer to my, my next call? So that's kind of the operational side that I keep in my, in the back of my mind as I'm looking at site plans when they come in. So, I, I've got a, I live in Apex, and I've got a road that dead-ends right now, and I know if they open it up, that people are going to come to, come right through there and use it as a shortcut, but I also know, too, that Apex just built Station Four, and it would probably cut five minutes off their drive time getting to my house if I needed help. So. Happy to answer any questions, or if you need anything else? Yes, sir, Mr. Segal.
And we've learned through the process the last few months about how you can have one point of access, but if it's a divided median lane, it's two points of access. That's one of my big issues, because we have proposals in front of us now that may never succeed, a lot of they may never get approved, but some connect to existing neighborhoods that were recently built, and some are just out there and have stubouts that may never be built. And so, do the stubouts give them credit, or is it just because they got a divided median? Because I can remember years ago, this is in the nineties, we had a tornado, and it went through Greenbrier, and through Jessup, Jessup was closed. All the trees fell, you couldn't get in. Luckily, there's another way to get in Greenbrier, but they had, and we had Fire Department and Public Works out there, you know, cutting trees, it's not ones that we could pick up with our hands and toss to the side, you had to have equipment. So, that access was blocked, and there's three hundred and some odd lots in Greenbrier, I believe, three sixty or three seventy maybe, in that neighborhood. So, that's the concern I have, is how, if you have a divided median, you know, entryway, and that happens, and there's no, the stubouts aren't connected to anything that's developed. I mean, you got the emergency access, we got the emergency access at different places that you've shown us, and we've got the one on Garner Road at the avenues at White Oak Townhomes, but I don't know if that's a positive or detriment because of the appearance issue. So, that's the concern I have, is we got a second emergency entrance that we're making do everything up from a landscaping standpoint, and that doesn't really look very nice. But again, it's, it's just some of these divided medians, it's like, aren't we, aren't we just, I just worry, because like, if you go to any beach in North Carolina, and brought up down the east coast, there are gates everywhere to get into our places, whether it's townhomes or condos, five, six, five, ten stories tall, there's gates to get in everywhere, and speed bumps. So I just look at these, and I think, and many of those are only one that's also in, for hundreds and hundreds of condos, which I look at some time and think, wow. This, one of them was built, some of them were in the late seventies and early eighties, so it's whole different boggy. So that's just the concern, is that, well, if you had a mass, if you had a massive issue there, and the entryway was blocked, what are you going to do? And I know this, it's not a common occurrence, but it could happen. I mean, again, it happened in Greenbrier twenty-plus years ago. So, I, I just, I don't understand how you can all of a sudden have the divided median, and that counts as two access points.
So, from an operational standpoint, we can, I mean, we do it now, we voluntarily take opposing traffic lanes. I've had to get off a truck and walk up and stop traffic to allow a truck to take a corner because it was too tight. We walked, I was on the department in Southern Pines when we had the tornado. We walked for five hours cutting trees with public works with back, or front-end loaders pushing trees out of the way. So, I completely understand, and, and, you know, we're trying to make sure that we, we, make sure we give the first responders the tools they need when they need it. Now, if it's a long-term closure, then, I mean, we'd have to come back and, you know, kind of look at options. But that, like, the, the divided median, as long as we've got twenty feet on one side, we could divide that down with cones, whatever, barricades, whatever we needed for a temporary purpose, once we did get whatever that obstacle was moved and out of the way. And it is hard thinking through it, but, I mean, we have, and, and I think we can, sorry, Jeff. I think we can definitely look at more, and, and I agree with our second points of access, those gates are not, are visually appealing, but there may be some additional things we can do to that to make it not look like a, just like the gate at Lennox Place, or the gate at Salt Hill, you know?
The gates are, are, I mean, well, the one at Salt Hill, that's because it's rural right there, right now. The gates aren't, I would rather have the gate at the one on Garner Road than not have the gate, because at least it would clearly keep people out of it, and you wouldn't see the trail.
And we're working with those folks right now. The developer and the HOA are actually in communication with us on.
Okay, that's just, it's just, I think it was a safety standpoint. I know there's a proposal for kind of three hundred plus units on New Bethel, but it's going to connect to an existing subdivision, it's got like four or five stubouts in it, which is fine, but then you add three hundred, to three hundred, you got six hundred, and really, there's only two points of access out on New Bethel short road. That's the key to me, is getting out to the collector's road, the main road, and, and, I mean, if a tornado went through there, good lord, it would be, and it would be horrible anywhere. Just the access that you think about is, 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 you know, I, I just, I look at these some time, I think, it's going to happen somewhere, and so it's going to be bad, and then next thing you know, they'll change the law, or change the code, or they'll adapt it to something else. So, that's just the issue I see is, again, the, we, the one we had on four oh one, that, that didn't get approved with the divided median, it had an emergency access, and a lot of times, the emergency access, you can't even see. I mean, there's one on Timber Drive, across from Timber Drive Elementary, and had the Springs, I think, that a lot of people don't know about. You can't think of trees that grown up now, I reckon the Fire Department had to go through, they had to mow down some trees and shrubs, but the, the roadbed was made for the firetruck to go through there. So, that's just, I mean, when I look at it, it says two points of access, but really, you only see one point of access, because you got a divided median, that's two points of access. That's the confusing line.
I think some of the way our UDO is written doesn't help, because the UDO lumps it all together in, to one type of access, but it covers both general and emergency. So just in thinking about that, I've kind of wondered, you know, is, if there's, if it would help, we could take a look at separating that out, and just not really even talking about the emergency, and let the fire code kind of cover that part of it, and make it more of just a general access requirement? Because, and the reason I say that is because, as long as emergency is lumped into there, if it satisfies as an emergency access, we've always said, well, then, it satisfies general access, because they're tied together, they're not separated in the UDO. So that's perhaps something we could take a look at, if there's a desire to separate and concentrate a little more on general access, and what that should be.
Oh, I remember on Wind Road, we made Wind Road one-way, but if there's emergency, it's going to be, whatever it takes to get it out there, emergency, we'll just go against it because it's an emergency situation, it matters if it's one-way, y'all, that overrules that, so. I know we did that one, which is a much longer way into, into the new subdivision versus the shorter one in Greenbrier. The Greenbrier connection is a short one, one-way. But I, I just sit here, as I look at these some time, I think, boy, not only Garner, there should be other places, too, that are doing the same thing. We're just waiting for a disaster to happen, and somebody's going to get trapped, and it's not going to be good. That's just, that's just a concern. I remember, there was a tornado, or severe storm, the subdivision off of Lake Drive, the one that when we widened and improved Lake Drive, and the trees were down, and the Fire Department started across the street and had to go around the, by backway. Well, now, there won't be a backway when the bridge is done. That's one reason I, I remember when we discussed that, Lake Drive needed to be improved, and while there's trees, you need to be taking down because of the fact that that's what happened, it had even more trees on it, you couldn't even get in there. So, it's just a, you just hate if, if it was other than a tornado, or a, or a fire spread, like in an apartment, and blocks ways in and out. You know? Just thinking out loud, I just wonder that, what it looked like with all the development, and I know some apartment buildings are sprinkled, but older ones may not be, like, we're setting ourselves up, not just Garner, but everywhere, for a horrible accident to happen.
I think, I mean, it, it's sort of, again, the one road is one road, whether there's a median on it or not, because of that simple fact of, if trees fall across both of them, it's one road. I think that the two that come to mind, it's that one on four oh one that we did approve, that was supposed to, got credit for the fictitious Vandoor Springs future connection, and it had the one entrance point, and we had the, it, it came to us that way, and it was like six hundred units, or five hundred units, apartments. But, and then the other concern on that one, too, is sort of, it's right up against the floodplain, so if you get a five-hundred-year flood event, all those people would have been trapped down there. I know there's one, there've been a couple neighborhood meetings of one off of Old Stage Road, across from those townhomes, and it kind of, this windy median, I don't remember how many units it is, it's more than the minimum, but it's like.
One hundred, it's a hundred and twelve.
It, it's like, that's exactly kind of where the tornado came through, you know, it started there, went across, but it's like, you get four, five, six trees across there. So, I, I, I'm, I'm kind of where Gray is, like, one road is one access point, but if it could be obstructed through one event on that road, then, whether it's flood, or, you know, trees or something, then it, it's the only way in and out. So, and I don't have a problem with the gated access. I take an ISO or over, you know, lack of access, right? I mean, that's sort of the, the call you have to make, and if there's a compromise that needs to be made in some places, that might have to be it. I think that's where we landed with the Grovemont Timber, you know, it was, took a, took a lot of work. So, I mean, it's, it's interesting, it's a difficult challenge. And, yeah, that's.
Who would have thought that stubs and access points could be so interesting and so complicated, and so controversial? And Paul, thanks for the anecdote about your particular house. You don't want the traffic, but you understand five minutes could save lives and property. And, and those are the decisions we have to make routinely, whether it's Greenbrier, or Forest Hills, or Lake Drive, you're looking at it, how do we make sure it's safe? How do we not make conditions worse for the neighbors? There's no simple answers. But thank goodness, we have people who've worked at this full-time, and Paul, who's had the experience of riding the truck for fifteen years, and then we have to find some middle ground, some balance of these things. So this information is extremely helpful, and we will be coming to you with the individual case studies, as we've already talked about here today, and we'll just do our best to work through those and come up with good solutions. So thank you for what you're doing, thanks for the information you shared. We don't have an action item, I'm glad we don't have to figure this out tonight. We'll take case by case as it comes up. So, again, any other questions, observations?
I, I think it might be helpful to take two or three neighborhoods, and sort of do this inventory of, of, I would just call them deprecated stub roads, stub roads that probably won't get connected. I mean, it might depend on what gets developed next to it, it might be a different kind of use, or almost like with the townhomes on, on Garner Road, where it's like, there's that provision for pedestrian access for, I, I think it might be helpful to start inventorying these, so, when, it's helpful for us, it's also helpful for a developer who comes in and wants to develop adjacent to these old neighborhoods, to say, you know, maybe we'll have a policy in place at that point, or if we don't, say, red, you know, yellow, yellow light on this, understand, this is, roll the dice, we're, it's a work in progress. Because I think that really kicked off in twenty twenty with the Cloverdale and that Raleigh development, that was on the other side, and they wanted to connect two of those roads, and we're sort of evolved to this point, four or five years later. But I think if we can sort of inventory what those problem spots are, and, and it's a limited area, I mean, it's a limited large area of Garner, I understand that, but, you know, Edge of Auburn, some other places, it's kind of like, it, it, the modern standard's there, and it's built in, and it's, the expectation's there. So I think it might be helpful even as, internally, to take a couple of neighborhoods and say, in this neighborhood, you got three stub roads, two of them would eventually work, and, you know, I, I don't know, just as a exercise, that's not too labor-intensive internally, because, because I don't know how much work it is, I haven't done it yet. It could be more work than I'm making it out to be.
It certainly could be a, a good exercise, as you say, for, maybe it's a small group, mini-seminar, you know, a couple of us sit down and look at a few of these, help us understand, and we don't have to take up the time of, of the entire populations of town, but we do need to learn about these important lifesaving, life-threatening measures that we deal with. So, so thank you for what you do. We will continue to ask questions, and please continue to prod us when there's things we need to know and understand. Okay? And with that, I think we can end this part of the, the presentation. Thank you very much, good stuff. And that moves us right along to manager reports, and we'll recognize our new town manager, no more interim manager report, we want a full, full-time, fully-loaded manager report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Before I jump into our monthly report, I just wanted to take the opportunity to express my gratitude for the council, and your appointment of me as the town manager is a true honor and privilege, and something It's a true honor and privilege and something that I'm really looking forward to undertaking this new role with the rest of the talented and dedicated staff here. So thank you for this honor, much appreciated. And I look forward to our continued work together with our talented staff on making Garner a great place to be. And there's what discussions tonight sort of point to, the kind of work and discussions we need to have to make sure that the town's a great place to be and it's a safe place to be. So I look forward to our continued work with that. So unfortunately, I'd hope that my family would be able to join us this evening. And unfortunately, we had a conflict with a middle school awards banquet. And so my daughter, who's in her last year of middle school, was also the soccer team's captain, and so she had to be there for that. So we made a deal. My husband was going to videotape the ceremony for me so that I can watch that when I get home. And then the deal was they were going to watch the appointment on TV, on YouTube TV when, when they got home. So technology is great and can make sure that we don't miss anything in each other's lives. So I just wanted to share that with you, that they had hoped to be here tonight, but unfortunately, a conflict in scheduling prevented them from being here. But their constant support of me and the work that I do here from Garner is recognized by myself and greatly appreciated as well. So thank you for the opportunity. Now to dive into our traditional manager reports, with you this evening is your pending agenda. So we'll be looking at our meetings in June. First, looking at our June 4 meeting. We've got a presentation of our Juneteenth proclamation that'll be before council. We also have two public hearings, the Swift Creek Apartments SUP, as well as the Town Hall Annex Project financing and the preliminary findings for resolution. These are the requirements that we must do for the borrowing, for the Town Hall Annex and the requirements for the local government commission. So that'll be before you at your June 4 meeting. We also have some items under old new business, the Wall Street, excuse me, the Wall Store Road project, as well as, based on our discussions at the budget work session last week, if you recall, we agreed to bring back more information for council's discussion and consideration of the FY '25 budget. So we'll be bringing that for council's continued discussion and consideration at your June 4 meeting. Looking ahead to the June 18 meeting, we've got several consent agenda items, including sort of end of the year cleanup on some budget amendments and contracts and those kinds of things that'll be before you. Right now, we have three public hearings that are in the queue. The first for Homestead at Bryan Farm, the second Bennett Assemblage Apartments North, and the third is 3412 Benson Road. We also have under old new business, Vintage Garner will also be back before you. The final approval for the resolution of the Town Hall Annex financing will be back. And then we have tentatively scheduled approval of the FY '25 budget during your June 18 meeting. And then we have our monthly talk of the town report as well. Looking forward to the June work session, we have a full work session at the end of June. One is the cost of services study update that we've shared with council. Our friend and consultant, Matt Newcaster, is going to come back with some updated information based on current revale numbers, but also the implementation of the town's pain class study. We'll be bringing back some recommendations of oversight for the pedestrian plan that was approved recently by council, how we plan on administering that and providing recommendations and guidance. Council code of conduct has also been included in the work session. This is something that council asked the town attorney to work on, so that'll be back before council. And then White Oak rounded out acquisition report as well. So as you can see, based on our June meetings, we have a full agenda. I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Questions? Looks like an exciting month coming up in June.
And then right after our June meetings, we have our July 3 celebration. So we have great things coming ahead.
Okay, that moving right along to attorney reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to remind council that the legislative zoning decisions training, we will be having, it's a, a virtual training by the School of Government, but we're going to hold it upstairs in the training room with members of the planning commission. And I'll be present along with staff from the planning department and the manager's office so that we'll be able to, to talk about these legislative zoning decisions, which basically are your rezonings, your map amendments, your text amendments. Posidial judicial training for SUPs, which happens in the odd years. So that's this Thursday from 1:00 to 4:30, again, will be in the, the training room. I did also want to let you know, registration is open for the Commit to Civility training by the North Carolina League of Municipalities. That training would be available on Thursday, June 20th from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. I, I have registered myself. Councilwoman Behringer already attended the training at the City Vision Conference. But basically, if at least 75% of town council, which would be five of six of you, attend the training, sign the pledge, and then adopt a resolution, then Garner could be recognized as one of the civil cities of North Carolina at next year's City Vision. So registration for that, there is no cost for that. They do have some in-person sessions available on the 18th, but considering that's a council meeting day, thinking that the, the virtual option, you know, would be better for most council members.
Excellent. Yeah, I strongly encourage all of us to, to attend that training. It's only a couple of hours. Kathy gave a good report from the one she went to. Not that we're uncivil, but we could always learn and, and I think it would help us develop a common language as we see the same thing. So I strongly encourage all of us to go, not for the recognition, but because if it just grazes our wheel just a little bit, it'll be time well spent. Thank you very much. Anything else? Thank you. That brings us to council reports. And we'll start down with Mr. Vance and see if he had any items, any reports, any questions?
No reports.
Mr. Dellinger?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Singleton?
First, I congratulate Ms. Miller. I was waiting for the confetti to fall. I thought we were going to have Virginia colors. I mean, in the room, I thought the confetti was going to get blown out, blown out here somewhere.
We got a reception in the works that our family can attend. There will be balloons, cupcakes, you name it. We, we got, we just got to pick the date that'll work with the middle school recognition stuff.
Right, got you. Thank y'all again for the information tonight. This is boring stuff for most people, but it's important stuff. You know, some of that grindin' stuff you kind of have to do, but it's a very important part to safety for folks. I'm looking forward to when we, the work session, we do the cost of services study update, since we've had our, had our budget meeting last week. And I went and pulled back the information we got from him in August. And it's really eye-opening to look at the, the break-even rate in Garner. And, and I'm talking about new property, not old. I mean, I think it's been approved recently in the last few years. And look at the difference between single-family detached homes and townhomes is, it'll blow your mind. I'm working on some numbers, I'm going to tie some stuff together to hand everyone just information, just for you to see. But it's stunning how in one plan and one project, how much the townhomes are valued and how across the street, how much the single home value or total. In some cases, it's not double, but in a couple of cases, it's almost, it's stunning to see something valued at 316 and see the house across the street at 560. And the difference is, is a single-family house on a piece of land, that's part of it, is the land. And the value that's assessed, of course, we have to base everything off assessment, not what it's sold. Seeing the chart last week from most of the units in the 2020s was between $300,000 and $400,000. I'm assuming that was the sale price that was on the chart. That information's the sale price, not the assessed price. And so even if it's the assessed price, it's below $378,000, which I'm assuming that number will be higher. And when we talk to him, when he gets the information in June, how much higher it'll be, I don't know. But it's really eye-opening to read the difference in that, even, I'm not talking about town, I got townhomes that were just sold last month and are not listed with Wake County yet because at the end of the year, but I got the ones that are beside them and they ended in December and the value's the same, same square footage, same footprint and everything. It'll be eye-opening to look at the difference, at how no new townhome project is even close. But most single-family homes in different neighborhoods, I got to do some other neighborhoods, it's, it's, their assessed value's substantially higher. And as we have to make business decisions, along with the UDO and the code and so forth, something's got to be thought about. You can't keep approving the things that are, are not paying for themselves because a lot of the older housing stock doesn't do that. So you need, as I said at the meeting, very upper-end housing or very affordable housing and nothing in between. Because right now, it's, that's what's stretching us with tax increases and so forth. And again, I look forward to the cost of services update information because that's going to be, I'm afraid it's going to be eye-opening even worse. But it, it's very good information to have, so. And I'm glad we're getting it updated within less than a year of the other one with the revale because that makes a big difference. So that's all I have. Thank you.
That's excellent. Again, it's attention to detail. Some people might say boring detail, decimal points, percentages, but it's critical to the financial success of our town, just as we talked about, the access points, critical to the safety and fire prevention. This is economic stability, financial sustainability, extremely important. Thank you for your attention to detail. I'm sure we will be getting a lot more detail on that soon to come. Mr. Matthews?
You alluded to just on Memorial Day that how well that went. November will have Veterans Day coming in and toward December, the Gold Star presentations and so, and, but just proud to say how much the town of Garner and, and this group supports our veterans and the military. It's a very important thing when so many places, places don't. And it was truly an education to present this past Monday out there. And so, but a lot going on and we'll keep everybody updated on what's happening, so. Appreciate the support.
Excellent.
We've got a good team.
You're doing a good job. And I learned, we learned more about the honor guard for the unknown soldiers than ever knew. I mean, it was really very interesting to learn that. I mean, it really was, and he was entertaining. But it was very interesting the way he, he, you know, delivered his message.
A little piece of history seemed very real.
Yes.
Very excellent. Well, if there's no further questions or comments, and I don't believe we need a closed session tonight, that was penciled in as an opportunity, nothing to discuss there. So I would be willing to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Vance? And Mr. Singleton, seconds. All in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed by nay. Hearing none is unanimous. We stand adjourned.
Congratulations, town manager.